All right, thank you. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Could you please join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, audience. Can we get the approval for the agenda for the CRA at this time? Their motion.
No move.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Amazon, and second by Commissioner Collins. All right, call the rolls.
Amazon.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
All right, Madam, I assume, Mr. Manager, I can yield to your deputy. Go ahead.
Thank you, Board, I guess our Board members, right, for the CRA. Thank you all for being here. All we have is a resolution, and I'll read it just for the record. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, sitting as a Community Development Agency, CRA Board, rescinding the award of the 309 Southwest Sixth Street proposal for purchase by Generational Gem Investment Group, LLC, reconsideration of proposals and selection of proposals after the public hearing, so technically it's a public hearing, providing for conflict severability and an effective date and for other purposes. Mayor and Commission, or Board members, there was an error with staff's recommendation, so we're just going to be rescinding it, and it's Manager's recommendation to move forward with Level Three Solutions Group and the Titanium Group, if you'd like to move forward that way.
Counsel, have you, have you any comments?
Yes, we apologize for the oversight last time. We didn't realize about the second proposal, so we're just required to reopen this, and if either of the applicants is here and wants to make any kind of statement, they can, and then you could then decide as a CRA to bring the recommendation forward to the City Commission at your 6:30 meeting, as to which one of those two that you want awarded to. It's not based on price, it's based on who you believe is the best proposer.
Okay, so it's the recommendation here by the City Manager's staff is to award it to the one at the highest bid at this time. That was your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Vice Mayor Amazon. Any additional comments? All right, call the roll, please.
Amazon.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
All right, thank you. Any additional Board members, CRA Board members, any additional comments from you, Commissioner Collins, for the CRA? Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
All right, to the audience, thank you all for participating in our short CRA meeting. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, we will have a CRA town hall, to let people know that's on December 30th at 5:30, because that is coming up in about a couple of weeks.
And it's been circulated, right?
Yeah, it's been going on, but we just mentioned it.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, this meeting is adjourned.
I think so.
Mayor and Commissioners, mags are live.
Okay, good evening. Then we're going to go ahead and start our workshop for Monday, November 17th, 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Amazon.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Reese.
Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda for the workshop, please.
Motion approved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Amazon. All right, please call the roll.
Amazon.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
All right, Madam Clerk, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This meeting is, this workshop is to discuss the regular meeting for November 17th, 2025. If you have any questions, please advise. We'll begin with two public hearings. One is relating to fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget amendments. You can refer to item number 14 for backup. There is also a public hearing relating to fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget amendments, and refer to item number 15 for backup. Under Presentations, we have the 2025 October Employee Safety Award recipient. We are also going to be adding, for consideration, item 2A, a presentation from Red Speed USA. Item 2B, special recognitions relating to business of the month, plural months. And item add-on 2C, holiday contests, from Commissioner Collins. Those three are going to be added under Presentations during the regular meeting, for consideration.
Can you repeat those three again?
Yes, sir. 2A, Red Speed USA, it's a presentation. 2B is special recognitions relating to business of the month. 2C, relating to holiday contests, from Commissioner Collins. All right, and under, for approval of the following consent agenda items, we have, for your consideration, item 3, approval to designate employees' holiday for calendar year 2026. Item 4, approval of budget transfer numbers 25-T-044 through 25-T-056. Item 7, approval of change order number 1 and 2 to 8 Construction LLC. Purchase order number 202500924 for renovations of the Lawrence E. William, Lawrence E. Will Museum. Authorization for mayor to execute change orders, and approval of budget transfer number 26-T-003 in the amount of $800. Item 6, approval to declare the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Annual Parade, the Afro Arts Festival Parade, the Black Gold Jubilee Parade, and the Glade Central Community High School Annual Homecoming Parade to be the, to be special events co-sponsored by the cities, by the city. Authorizing the city manager to execute parade permits for set events for calendar year 2026. Item number 7, approval to piggyback Sourcewell's contract number 010825-WQI, bulk solid waste and recycling equipment with Wastequip Manufacturing Company, LLC, for the purchase of 77 dumpsters in the amount of not to exceed $69,999. Approval of the City of Belgrade's addendum with Wastequip Manufacturing Company, LLC, relating to Sourcewell's contract with Wastequip Request for Proposal number 010825, and vendor's quote contract letter number WQ-10362987. Approval of mayor to execute addendum and authorization to issue a purchase order to Wastequip Manufacturing Company, LLC. Item 8, approval to piggyback National Intergovernmental Purchase Alliance Company, Almenia Partners Public Sector Contract number 226024-02, refuse and recycling container solutions and related products, equipment, and services with Toddler, LLC, for the purchase, to purchase 96-gallon residential refuse containers in the amount of not to exceed $40,000. Approval of the City of Belgrade's addendum with Toddler, LLC, request for proposal number 226024-02, and vendor's quote contract letter number WQ-10362985. Approval for mayor to execute addendum and authorization to issue a purchase order to Toddler, LLC. Item number 9, approval of amendment number 2 to the City of Belgrade's addendum to the TGI Office Automation LLC lease agreement, and authorization for the mayor or city manager to execute the addendum, number 2, Exhibit A, documents and any other documents required by the TGI Office Automation LLC. Item number 10, approval to purchase a used 2021 John Deere 2700 Precision Cut Triplex mower in the amount of $23,000, and used 2021 John Deere 1200 bunker and field rake in the amount of $11,500 from Everglades Equipment Group. Item number 11, ratification of purchase of a used 2019 Ford F-150 half pickup truck from Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners in the amount of $13,694, and approval of budget amendment number 26-A-001 in the amount of $9,194. Item 12, approval of, approval to dedicate 12th Drive in honor of Mr. Hollis W. Harris. And Mayor and Commissioner, for the record, this item is, if approved, this item would only just begin the process of renaming the road. Item 13, approval to enter into amendment number 2 with Mr. Barry Carrigan concerning the existing agreement for social media services provided to the City of Belgrade, extending the contract terms through October 31st, 2026. Mayor and Commissioners, there is a correction on the agenda item report. The expected costs for the contract should read 40,000 and then not 44,000. Do you have any questions? Under adoptions of resolutions, we have number 14, 2025-40242, relating to finances, providing for an amendment to fiscal year budget beginning October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025, approving associated budget amendment, and provide an effective date. Item 15, 2025-4043, relating to finances, providing for amendment to fiscal year budget beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, approving associated budget amendment and provide an effective date. Item 16, 2025-4044, granting approval of a time extension for the Small County Outreach Program Agreement by and between the State of Florida Department of Transportation and the City of Belgrade for resurfacing seven city roadways. Item 17, 2025-4045, relating to the approval of Small County Outreach Program Agreement by and between the State of Florida Department of Transportation and the City of Belgrade for resurfacing of eight city roadways. Item 18, 2025-4046, approving the interlocal grant agreement ILA by and between the City of Belgrade and Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County relating to the old band room at 350 Southwest 10th Street. Item 19, 2025-4047, approval to rescind the award of 309 Southwest Sixth Street proposal for purchase by Generation Gem, Generational Gem Investment Group, LLC, and reconsideration of proposals and selection of proposal after public hearing.
So, excuse me. So, Madam, Mr. Mayor, can we take that one off consent? Because it has to have the public hearing, it's put it on regular. I know you talked about it at the CRA, but a short presentation at the regular meeting, so if you don't mind moving that down, just under other business.
Under other business?
I'd be fine.
Okay. To be voted on separately, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Item 20, 2025-4048, granting approval for George Amador Jr.'s application for site plan approval for property located at 500 Orange Avenue Circle, partial control number 04-37-43-19-00-000-1140. Under, under other business, we have item 21, approval to appoint a city commissioner to serve on the Airport Advisory Committee. Mayor and Commissioners, I will ask for a motion to appoint a commissioner at that time, if there's not a nomination at that time, if you do not make a motion for nomination. Adoption of ordinance, first reading, 2022, 2025-17, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, annexing one partial of real property totaling approximately 7.6 acres owned by Jose Hernandez Rivera and Juanita Montejo, located south of East Canal Street South and east of Whittaker Road, as more particular described herein, declaring that the voluntary annexation of the properties meet all legal criteria, directing city administrative staff to take all actions necessary to effectuate the annexation, providing for conflicts, clause severability, and effective date. Item 23, 2025-18, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, and annexing one partial of real property totaling approximately 0.23 acres owned by Jam Row Properties, Row Properties Investment LLC, located at 404 First Street, as more particularly described herein, declaring that the voluntary annexation of all the properties meet all legal criteria, directing city administrative staff to take all actions necessary to effectuate the annexation, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. That's all my reports.
Okay, so we have a couple of things we need to look at, but Commissioners, let's go over, so for the regular meeting. So, the changes are, we're going to have 2A, which is Red Speed, 2B, which is the business of the month, and then 2C, which would be Christmas decoration contest, right? On that, so if we can take a minute, Commissioner Collins, I assume you're leading the way on this. Can you briefly go over this, and I do have one or two questions.
So, just briefly, this Christmas contest is two categories. One being best yard decor, and the other one being door decorations. The beautification committee will go around, once all eligible recipients have requested to be a part of the contest, all of those emails will be taken into consideration with emails, I mean, excuse me, physical addresses and names. Once the time comes for it to be judged, they will ride around and put, you know, criterias based on either yard or door, and come back to vote on which is which. There will be a first, second, and third place winner for each category, as well as each one of them would have the opportunity to be featured on the city's social media page, as well as the parades.
Soon, and I'm sure you do, the committee, is there a committee?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and...
Ms. Jenna is here, she's part of the committee as well.
Who?
Jenna Rhimes.
Okay, okay. And this committee, is it staff only, or with staff, community?
Community. As community.
How many you have on your committee, do you know?
It's like four.
Four, okay. All right, good idea, good idea. I think it'll bring... I think it'll bring a lot of cheers in the community if people want to celebrate that.
Hopefully.
Just a step. Number 12, I think the city clerk made it clear that it's, what a wonderful man Horace Harris was, a good man. Max, you want to briefly tell us the process? There is a process, but it's regarding number 12?
Well, Mr. Harris has been with the Housing Authority for many years, 30, 40 years. I was the executive director there at one time, and he was on the board. He's done a lot for the community throughout the years, served on many boards. He's also on the board regarding drainage for the surrounding areas. He's been on many boards. And they're just asking, this is one of the streets in their complex there that they would like to name in his honor, and I think it's well deserved.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And other business, it's going to be presentation as recommended by council. We all give it that. That's from 19. Is that correct, Glenn?
That's correct, sir.
Number 19, going to be a presentation?
Yes, that'll be a presentation and their number 20 or 21. I'm not sure where the...
We'll say 21A, yes.
21A?
21A.
Okay, Commissioners, make the changes. And number 22, so I asked the manager today, give me an update on this annexation request. He seemed kind of baffled about it, so can we give an update or? Hit your mic.
This is industrial property in the county. They want to purchase the property and put a forklift business on the property, repairs and sales. So, it fits in with the surrounding properties, and it's just a standard request for voluntary annexation.
Has any conversation made with the manager? You know, you guys, I hate to beat you up on this, Mr. Kramer.
It's okay.
I always share with you guys, you know, you guys have to do these things, but it needs to go through the manager. So, when the commissioner make contact with him, okay, so he can tell us. And when I asked him today, I'm like, okay, he had no idea.
My mistake, then. I understand.
It's not to call y'all on it. It's just, we got to do these things, okay? Please get the petitioner to sit down with the manager so that we can have a conversation.
Sure. No problem.
So, I'm going to ask that we pull it for tonight and let the manager meet with you and the petitioner.
Very good.
That's what I'm asking for the workshop, but, you know.
Can I pull that?
Oh, just a consensus for the workshop. Okay. And then in the meeting. And Mr. Kramer, again, my apologies not putting you on the spot. We just got to do these things. Okay, thank you. And the last, I think, that does for me. All right. Are you, Commissioner Collins, anything on the workshop?
Nothing for the workshop.
Item 21, would you want to go ahead and nominate a commissioner?
Yes. I think Commissioner Reese would be fine.
I'm good with him.
Okay. We can put that on the floor and...
Make the motion to nominate, put his, he'll be appointed.
Okay, all right. You okay with that? All right. Let's move on to city manager report. Mr. Manager, anything for the workshop?
No, sir.
Okay. On city PR, council?
No, sir.
Okay. Welcome back, Captain Payne. Welcome back. And anything for the good and order, for the workshop?
No, sir.
Well, okay. Fire Red School, I don't see them out there. Any orders coming for the workshop?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner, and we're closing on again with Commissioner Collins.
Nothing for the workshop.
Okay. And again, to Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just want to make a comment on where we at with the noise ordinance. We know we be having some issues in the past couple of weeks again. Had died down, but we need to bring something to the commission soon so we can go ahead and put some, help our code enforcement, help our PBSO, because if we don't give them the ordinance or stuff, they're not, I mean, it's just, you know, it's just a laughing situation when the PBSO goes out there and we really, they can't do too much. They just laugh at them and blow them off. So, I think it's, we've dealt with this too much, too long, and we just need to go ahead and bring something once with approval of PBSO, of course.
We have about 10 minutes for our workshop. We can spend the time wisely. I guess the people in the community don't want us to keep talking about it. And there is something in writing, I think, and I'm going to yield the floor to Captain Payne so that we can, even if we have to repeat it at the workshop, we can do it at the regular meeting and take action. But we need to be on the right course. So, give us an update. And I know Mr. Daddell, because I'm getting those calls every day at night. When I just be in my little sleep, I get these calls or texts. So, give us a game plan. What are we doing and where we at?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners on the dais, I agree that we have to do something with this noise ordinance to satisfy the citizens. However, I did have a meeting with the city manager and Mr. Daddell today. So, there's no secret that I've been out for some time and looking over the proposal. I want to ask the commission if you would grant me an extension to review your current ordinance as well as the proposed proposal and let me come back to the commission next month, next commission meeting with the recommendation.
30 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Collins and Vice Mayor, I can tell you, there's one particular person in this community out there that doing and being defiant. And I'm saying to you, I know I can't make these statements about what you should do, but when these folks are being defiant, we go there and you tell them to turn it down. Then when you leave, they go back and turn it on. That's being defiant and disturbing the peace. And we got to do something. And whatever document we come up with, if the commissioner grant that, I'm sure they wouldn't have a problem with it. But 30 days. But in the meantime, what are we doing to combat this continuation with the same folks?
We're currently working on it. I've addressed some of my sergeants today. We looked at some state statutes and some other ordinances that we can address these issues. But once again, there's some things that I have.
I understand.
I need some time to go over. But I am talking with my deputies and making sure that we're dealing with the repeat offenders.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Any additional comments on that? And we'll close out. If there's not, we have about eight minutes. If not, this workshop is adjourned.
Mayor and Commissioners, mics are live.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this regular scheduled meeting for Monday, November 17 to order, 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Amazon?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Reese? Wilson?
Here. Thank you so much for the invocation. Will you all please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our very own Commissioner Collins. Moment of silence, please.
In the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, audience. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. We'd like to add to the agenda. Item A, under presentations, a presentation by Red Speed USA. Item 2B, special recognition relating to the Business of the Month. Item 2C, holiday contests from Commissioner Collins. We want to move item 19 under other business as item 21A, and we're pulling item 22.
Okay. What's your motion?
And I also want to appoint Commissioner Reese for item 21 to serve.
Okay.
So moved.
It'll come up on the...
Okay. So moved.
All right. We have a motion to accept amendments on second by, motion made by Vice Mayor Amazon has been seconded by Commissioner Collins with the changes. All right. Call the roll, please.
Amazon?
Hi.
Collins?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi. Again, welcome to our meeting, to all you VIPs in your respective places. We thank you all for taking time out of your schedule to be with us. We do have with us tonight, representing Senator Laura Berman, who's a strong advocate for the Glades community in Belgrade. Please stand and be recognized, Ms. Bryant. Thank you. Let's give her some love. Thank you so much. We have Mr. Eddie Lee Rose. He's a champion in many places, Tri-City Vice Chairperson. Thank you, Mr. Rose. And to all of you again in your respectable places, thank you so much for being with us tonight. We hope to have a very good and productive meeting. Having said that, Madam Clerk, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to open our first public hearing at 6:32 PM. This public hearing is relating to fiscal year 2024-2025 budget amendment. Anyone wanting to speak before relating to this item, please rise to be sworn in. There be no public comments. This public hearing is closed at 6:32 PM. We have a public hearing to open. The second public hearing is opening at 6:32 PM relating to fiscal year 2025-2026 budget amendment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please rise to be sworn in. There be none. This public hearing is closed at 6:33 PM. Following presentations, we have item 2, 2025 October Employee Safety Award recipient, Mrs. Brenda Roa within the Building Department. She is not able to make it today. For consideration, we would like to give her check over to her immediate supervisor. Now Commissioners, and Mayor Commissioners, would you step down for the following presentations? Just have them down. Our first presentation is from Redspeed. Whenever they do come down, I'll put them... And if we can turn it...
I'll turn around. I get it. Yep.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I'm talking to empty chairs. There we go. I apologize. I'm giving you my back, Mr. Manager. Oh, beautiful. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. Thank you for having myself and my colleague Kevin Milan here in the front row. My name is David De La Sprie. I'm currently the Vice President of Redspeed, both Sales and Client Relations. Mainly, I have the benefit of dealing with the almost 40 clients that we have statewide that have opted to contract with Redspeed in order to deal with both, not only the speed enforcement programs that we do, but we also do red light cameras. In fact, we've been doing red light cameras in Florida for a couple decades in Coral Gables. But in any event, so just a little bit about myself. I retired about a year and a half ago from the city of Miami Beach. I was the Assistant Chief of Police in Miami Beach. And then about four months ago, my colleague Kevin retired from the city of Miami Beach as well. It's funny because he was the FOP president. He was a union president. And so, we had very interesting conversations when we were still both employed, dealing with the labor. Anyways, obviously, we got along because we hired him to also help out with the client relations side of things. So I'm gonna go over, this is kind of a lengthy presentation, but I'm gonna cut through some of the some of the technical things that I don't, you know, that for now, obviously, you could always refer back to it. A couple of months ago, I was contacted by Ms. Maron here, and I came in and I spoke to not only Ms. Maron, but the manager, and we kind of gave a presentation on what we could offer to the city of Belgrade, which is the button that... There we go. All right, perfect. So just a little bit about the experience. Back then, actually, this was the only slide I had to update from that original one because I think when we came the first time, we were just shy of 30 contracts. Now, this is actually, as of yesterday, now it's gone up to 39. So we are definitely the leader in Florida when it comes to school zone speed enforcement. As you can see there, we've got over 800, almost 890 school zones and over 450 live systems throughout the state. We go all the way from Panama, where we've got clients in Panama City, Fort Walton Beach, Tallahassee. I know that the Vice Mayor knows about the Tallahassee sites, and all the way down to as far south as Homestead. So we've pretty much covered throughout. Now, here in Palm Beach County, we're live in Loxahatchee Groves, we're live in Boca Raton, and we'll be going live on December 1st, I believe, right around December 1st, with Delray Beach. So we already have a footprint within Palm Beach County. Now, Redspeed has been in existence for eight, nine years, prior to Florida passing this law back in 2023, House Bill 657. Georgia has a very similar, almost identical law. As a matter of fact, the Florida law was kind of mirrored off of the Georgia law, and we've got about 70% of that market share currently in Georgia. So some big clients like Gwinnett County. Our biggest clients now in Florida right now is Miami Dade County with close to 306 schools, followed closely by Hillsborough County, and I believe Tallahassee is probably right behind there. So we have from some very large clients to small clients. Loxahatchee Groves, for example, has one school, and it's doing really well on Okeechobee Road. Key Biscayne has one school, a private school. So we are able to accommodate regardless of size of city. All right? So we talked a little bit about this. I kind of went over the schools that we have in Palm Beach County and some of our bigger clients. This is an important slide. This talks about kind of the success of these programs. What we've seen in terms of data, and really the main focus of this program, regardless of what vendor, but the main focus of this program is safety. And what we've seen over the eight, nine, 10 years that we've been doing this, that we've been in business, from the initial speed studies to a year after implementation, you're looking at about 90%, 90% reduction in speeds in those school zones. That is significant when you're talking about making the school zones safer for not only the children that are walking to school, the parents that are walking into school. We even have many of these in the high schools. We have a lot of high school kids that go out for lunch. So these programs and the entire system of camera enforcement has been very effective in reducing those speeds and creating the safer zones. Really, that is the ultimate goal of these programs. Now, the revenue side of this, and I don't have a slide that outlines it, but I'm gonna outline it for you really quick. The fine is $100, right? So regardless of how fast you're going, you could be doing 20 miles over the speed limit, it is only $100. There are no points on these violations, ever, on the entire life of that cycle of that of that citation, of that violation, even if it converts into a uniform traffic citation down the road. The only way you can convert into a uniform traffic citation and become part of the Palm Beach County court system is if the person receiving that initial violation completely ignores it, right? So if they get it and they do absolutely nothing with it, it can eventually convert into a uniform traffic citation. But even if it converts into a UTC, it will never be, it will never have points assessed. It's treated as a non-moving violation. Now, having been in law enforcement for almost 30 years, and the PBSOs can tell you this, if you're doing 10, 15, 20 miles over the speed limit in a school zone, usually that's four points on your driver's license, and I think it should be probably close to $400, $500 nowadays for that kind of speed. So $100, no points, no matter how fast you're going. The trigger is 11 miles per hour. So if it's a 15 mile per hour school zone, the vehicle has to be doing 26 miles per hour or more in order to get a violation that get triggered. And it goes to the registered owner of the vehicle. So it doesn't matter who's driving. It goes to whoever owns the vehicle. Now, let's say it's your car, Mr. Mayor, but you lent it to someone. There is a process in place where if you receive one of these violations and you weren't driving the car, you can fill out an affidavit to send it to us, and we will transfer that liability to whoever was driving. Interestingly, we've seen this where it's the husband's car or a wife's car, and the husband or the wife was driving, and they sent us a transfer liability and want that person to pay for it. I found that, I find that kind of interesting that they would do that. My wife would not cook for me for a week if I did that to her. Anyway, this is something that we're very proud of. The Florida Police Chiefs Association, we are the only vendor that is basically in force. We're a preferred partner of the Florida Police Chiefs Association. Our senior Vice President was very actively involved in helping pass this legislation in Tallahassee in partnership with the leadership at the Florida Police Chiefs Association. So we're very proud of being the only vendor in Florida, really the only vendor, that has this partnership, preferred partner designation by the Florida Police Chiefs. So we're very proud of that, and I'm still very much active in this association. I'm still on the Rewards Committee. So it's very, very important for me as well personally. And this is another little tidbit that I think a lot of cities, especially smaller cities, kind of like. We partner with Wyserota, is the law firm that we use. And so if there's ever anything that comes up associated with litigation when it comes to this program, we have Wyserota on retainer, and they will handle the entire case. In fact, the attorney that we mainly deal with is the same attorney that argued in front of the Florida Supreme Court with the red light camera, I think it was Aventura versus, I forgot the name of the plaintiff, but he successfully argued the red light camera program in front of the Florida State Supreme Court. So we're very proud of this partnership with Wyserota. Equipment, I'm gonna go over really quick. We have state-of-the-art equipment. If not, I don't think we'd be in almost 40 cities. We do have something I'm gonna point out because I think it's a good option. We have a solar-powered option. If the location is appropriate, right? Because not every location's appropriate, depending on tree cover, canopy, et cetera, et cetera. If the location's appropriate, this is an excellent option for not only from the green perspective, but also from the getting the, getting the cameras up and running quicker. One of the stumbling blocks that we tend to come across when it comes to the power sites is FPL. FPL sometimes doesn't turn on the power as quickly as we would like to turn on the power. So solar is a, definitely a time saver when it comes to installation and permitting. So we are very proud of that. And so here's, you see, when you get back and you review the presentation, you'll see the differences between solar and powered. And that's the slide, solar and powered. Now, there are some limitations to the solar, just, you know, in terms of power generating. I think it can only do up to two lanes as opposed to, you know, four lanes, but I'm not even sure that many of your school zones probably aren't more than two lanes, I would imagine. So that wouldn't be an issue for you all here in Belgrade. Yes, ma'am. Shoot. Go ahead.
My question is, how effective would that be, like, after a storm, or even though it's solar?
Right. Well, actually, I think the solar is, if a storm was to come through and knock out power, then the solar would be a phenomenal option because then it's a much quicker turn-on, for lack of a better term. What we would do is if it's a serious enough storm, we would just, we would just remove, our folks would remove the solar panels to protect them. But then the installation of that solar panel back up again is super easy and super quick. So it would be a lot faster than the powered if FPL's... And I'll tell you that when hurricane season comes, we tend to see a little slowdown, especially if there's a storm out in the Caribbean, because the resources for FPL, correctly so, are being diverted to other issues and preparation for storms. And so we tend to see a kind of a slowdown when it comes to getting these things up and running. But the solar, it would definitely help out when it comes to a storm. If it's a bad enough storm, we will take those solar panels down. Yes, ma'am. Great question, though. Where am I not pointing? All right, this, okay, there we go. So let me just go over real quick. You didn't tell me how much time I had. Five minutes or so? Okay. So, speed violations, just to give you the, just to kind of give you the flow of how it works in the backend. Again, you're going more than 11 miles per hour. Your cameras are, our cameras capture you. That information from the tag gets sent back to our back office. We have, obviously, we have the connection with FLHSMV or with Enlets, depending if it's in-state or out-of-state. We have to wait for that information to come back for the registered owner. And then once the registered owner information comes back, it goes through a two-step process in our back office where we have two different reviews to ensure that we're citing the correct vehicle. We want to make sure that the license plate is the license plate we ran. Once that happens, it then goes to the city, where in this case, the Palm Beach Sheriff's Office, whoever the captain decides to assign to this program, would be trained on how to go into our platform and approve the, review it, and then make the decision either to approve or disapprove. I love saying this when we go to training, and I can say it because, again, I retired as a police officer. Our platform is cop-friendly, meaning it's a green button and a red button. You can't mess it up. So you can't break our system. So it's very simple. And then once that decision is made by the deputy, if they decide to go ahead and issue the violation, then it comes back to electronically, back to our back office where we print, mail, and off it goes. They're given 30 days from the print date in order to pay this. And then they have, they basically have three options when they receive this in the mail. They can pay it, and we have online mechanisms that make it very easy for them. They can request an administrative hearing, which would be done here locally, you know, with a magistrate, and they have their opportunity to come in front of the magistrate here and plead their case. I'll tell you that only less than 1% of violators that receive a violation request an administrative hearing. So it is a very minimal impact when it comes to your magistrate system, however, your code enforcement system that hears these kind of cases. This is kind of like a code violation. It's a civil infraction. So it would go in front of your magistrate. So it's less than 1% is what all our data suggests, request an administrative hearing. So that's option two. And then option three is they can completely ignore it. And if they completely ignore it, it's gonna eventually, after 30 days of being expired, it's gonna go back to that same portal where a deputy will have to go in and re-approve it as a uniform traffic citation. And then it gets shipped off electronically by us over to the clerk's office, and we already have that connection because of Loxahatchee Groves and Boca. And that then gets issued and is treated as any other non-moving violation, you know, just like anything else that goes through the same process. You know, eventually, if they request a hearing, the deputy will have to go to court in order to defend and to prosecute that violation. And then, you know, once that's resolved and once that's done, either at the UTC level or here administratively, if they're found in violation here administratively, then they're, whatever the fine is, it's $100 plus, and you as a city can charge up to $250 administrative fee. That's per statute. So I don't know what your administrative fee is for a regular code enforcement hearing, but this statute allows you to charge up to $250, and that is obviously up for you all to decide how you want to do that. Whatever that decision is and whatever that fine is, we then mail out a final administrative order to the violator, and they're given either, by default, 30 days. We have seen it where magistrates will sometimes extend that, depending on circumstances, you know, 60 days, 90 days. We'll work with your city as to however, you know, you want to do that. You can, you can allow the magistrate unlimited, or you can tell us, hey, listen, no more than 60 days. That's really, really up to you all as a client. So that's the process of a violation. That's the citation flow. Okay. Real-time crime centers, and just a little word for our PBSO captain. We've been working kind of close with Captain Mugridge, who works with the traffic unit for PBSO, obviously because of Loxahatchee Groves, and their real-time crime center is gonna be benefiting as well because some, you know, these, you cannot use our, you can't use the camera feeds for live surveillance, but you can use it for things that are incidental to the video. So if something happens, or let's say they're looking for, like we had just the other day at one of our clients, they called us and said, we're looking for a homicide suspect. We think he went through your cameras. Can you go back and provide us with the video for this time and this time? Absolutely. We provide you the video from the time that they designated. So there's, there is a, I don't want to say surveillance because that's the bad word. There is an investigative benefit to these cameras. And then on top of that, just as part of one of the things that we do is, we also partner with Flock. Captain, do they use Flock here? You all use Flock, because I know, I'm pretty sure Flock is the LPR provider for PBSO, I believe.
We use ShotSpotter here in the city of Belgrade, and Paohoke just started using Flock.
Flock, okay. Because we will provide, for every camera that you install, speed camera, we'll provide a feed for, at our cost, for LPR, whether it be with Flock. I mean, Flock is who most people use, but we can, we can integrate with pretty much any, any of the LPO providers. So that is an additional benefit to you all that you're not having to pay for. We're incurring that cost. So that's, that's a huge plus for the investigative side and the public safety in general. Now, a little bit about the distribution of that $100. I started to talk about that, just to give you an idea. That $100 is statutorily defined in terms of how it's broken down. $20 goes to the State of Florida General Fund. $3 goes to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement Training Fund. $12 goes to the Palm Beach County School District to be used for safety enhancements, walkability, those kinds of issues. Where was I? That's 35. $5 goes to school crossing guard program, which I'm assuming would be under the PBSO, and that helps with training, hiring, equipment, et cetera. And then the remaining $60, that's where the revenue share comes in between the city and Redspeed. You would get $39 of that 60, and we would get $21. And the reason why that's set up that way is because it's zero cost to you all as a city to implement this. We incur all of the upfront costs for permitting, installation, construction, all the things that is associated with the program. So that is on paid violations, and then that would come into the city once you start collecting fines. Every week by statute, we would have to make that transfer over to you all. So on Mondays, Kevin and I, we see the emails from our finance folks to all our clients. Monday mornings is where all the reports go out to all the cities that have, that are contracted with us, and it's broken down. First of all, we break it down by those buckets so that your finance folks knows exactly how much money has to go to where. And then the day, Tuesday or Wednesday, the transfer has occurred and is in your bank accounts, whatever, whatever accounts you all identify as where you want this money to go. So, safety being obviously the very first primary reason for this program, but then from the fines that are collected by violators, that money can be utilized. The statute says that that money can be used for public safety initiatives. That is the term that they use in the statute, and I am sure that your PBSO staff is gonna be very good at being able to define what that might be because, you know, I was a SEPTED certified. I'm SEPTED certified, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, so I can, I can pretty much justify almost anything for public safety initiatives when it comes to how to spend the money. It is very important, though, and I will stress this, that your finance folks do keep a really good line item of that because you're gonna have to, as part of the statute, one of the legal requirements of the statute is, once a year, the administration is gonna have to present in a public hearing and allow for public... is going to have to present in a public hearing and allow for public comment, how, how much was brought in, how many violations were paid, and how that money was distributed, and how that money was expended. So just something to keep in mind in the back of your mind, you, that's, that, I try to stress that at the very beginning, so that you can set it up the right way, so that you don't have headaches down the road. I think I hit it. Oh, very big, very important, the educational campaign. So if you were to go with Red Speed, what we would do is, we would, we would produce, we would film, produce, and pay for a public service announcement, and that is tailored to however you would like it. In fact, I'm flying out on Thursday to Panama City to go film theirs with their chief of police. And typically, it's a two-and-a-half-minute, three-minute PSA that you can use however you want. We produce it, we'll come over here, we'll film it, and we'll put it together. In addition to that, we'll also provide flyers, postcards, pretty much anything that you guys can think of. We have some standards, and we have some templates that we use, that you can then use to distribute to your community, number one. We like to have one of the digital flyers that we provide, that we'd like for you all to provide to the principals of the school. Principals usually have a very good email distribution list of their parents. We don't want, this isn't a gotcha type of program, this is a slow-down kind of program. So we want to get the word out as much as possible. And in fact, what we see is, along with that 90, 95% reduction in speed, we also see, especially early on, the number of residents, local residents, diminishes substantially once the program starts. And that is a direct correlation of how well you do your educational campaign in relation to the program. So you get the message out, your local residents are going to know about it, and they're going to be more aware. And the whole purpose is that during a school day, because this only runs during a school day, during a school day, when they're approaching a school, the goal is, kind of like Pavlov's theory, right, the bell ringing? The idea is, when they approach a school, that they automatically slow down and take their foot off the accelerator. Really, that's what we're trying to condition drivers to do, to slow down. And so, that's the main purpose of the program. And with the educational campaign, you can really hammer your, your local community, and I don't mean hammering that way, I mean, you can really get the message out to your local community, so that it's others. And, you know, I'm sure, you know, there's certain areas where you have transient, we see that, like, for example, in South Miami and Pancras, we see that the vast majority of their violators are transient type of, and not so much the residents. So I think that's really, really important. I'm not going to, I don't even think I can play these, but these are just samples. We, we can do it in English, we can do it in Spanish, we can put subtitles in any language that you like. We've done, I think we did Russian for one city, Creole, so we, we can put it into any language and like. And then, just some of the reporting that we do, this one particular report is our Top Five Speeders Report that we can run at any time. I like running this once a week. I typically, I, I haven't done it in a while, but I usually push this out on my LinkedIn account, and I just highlight the stop, top speeder for the week from anywhere in the state. Now, obviously, I blur out the license plate, I don't, you know, I don't have any identifying, I don't want, you know, obviously, we don't want to let, let people know who it is, but you'd be surprised, you know, 80, 90 miles per hour through some of these school zones. It's incredible, the number of speeders that, that are out there. Pricing, we, we already just kind of discussed the, the breakdown and how it works. Questions? Mr. Mayor, you look like you had some questions. Sure.
Well, again, thank you, Dave and Kevin. I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues for comments, and then I'm going to ask our deputy manager. We always want to think outside of the box, and then Captain Payne, at some point, we need to be engaged in this process with us. So I'm going to yield to Commissioner Collins and then the Vice Mayor for any comments they may have. Clear direction here, we want to make sure that we onboard, if need be.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you so much for that presentation. Safety is always our number-one priority, especially when it comes to our kids, and for this to be a free program integrated within the city, I think that is a plus and a win-win for all. Thank you.
I do have two questions. Is there an added cost to PBSO? You said, you know, out of the 60, the municipality gets 39, you keep 21. Let's say PBSO is going to charge us a processing fee for each. Is there something with PBSO extra?
Well, in terms of costs, I mean, there's a labor cost, because he's going to have to assign, someone from Belgrade is going to have to be assigned to do the reviewing. So there's a labor cost associated. I would also just, you know, tell you now, that there's probably, you could, you could assign a labor cost to your magistrate hearing process as well. We handle all of the administrative side of that. I mean, we try to make it as simple and easy as possible, to the point that, like I, like I mentioned, the platform is very simple. Once a deputy gets experienced and, and Captain Payne can reach out to Captain, sorry, Captain Sand over at the Loxahatchee Groves, they can do three, four per minute of these violations, and so they, they become really good at processing. But there's, there's a labor cost. Obviously, you're going to assign, you're going to attach a labor cost to that.
My other question, can we set these cameras to specific times? Because one of the major schools that we have here, and we have a lot of concern, is Clay Center, it's on State Road 80, that is a divided highway, two lanes and two lanes, and I don't want to stop the traffic all day. Most of the majority of the kids, let's say, is from 6:45 to maybe 8:15, and then in the afternoon, maybe 1:30 to 3 o'clock. So can we do that?
Yeah, we could definitely discuss that. I will mention this to you, though, that that, that hampers the effect that I think you're trying to achieve, which is, it then conditions drivers to look for either a flashing light or look at their watch, as opposed to consider that they're approaching a school zone, knowing that as kids can come and go, parents can take kids to the doctors, you know, in the middle of the day. And I, and I'll tell you that, I mean, the simple answer is yes. The more global policy decision, from your perspective, would be, does that impede a little bit in what you're trying to accomplish? And so, from my perspective, and now I'm kind of relying on my law enforcement background, I, I think you're impeding on what you're trying to accomplish.
That's your concern?
No, sir.
That's a, that's a major state role, and for it to be eight hours or more, you know, I don't want to...
Well, what's the regular, because it's not, well, let me, let me...
It's a state, it's a state road going through our city, so...
So perhaps I can, perhaps I can maybe assuade your concern this way, because is it 20 miles per hour or 15 miles per hour for a school zone there? I, I don't, I don't know that, that road. Should be 20, right? So during the flasher times, let's say they're called flasher times, for lack of a better term, during the reduce-speed times, when kids are in the morning and the afternoon, if it's a 20 mile-per-hour zone, they're not getting sighted until they hit 31. But an hour and a half after school starts, that speed limit goes to 45? Okay. So they're not getting sighted unless they're doing 56. So you're really, you're really getting them at 56 and above, which I think everyone can, I think everyone can probably agree, those speeds are way too fast for that road anyways. So it's not 20 miles per hour all day.
You didn't say that.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I, I realized when you said what you said, that, that you thought it was 20 miles per hour the whole day. No, sir. That would definitely, that would definitely cause some problems in traffic flow, for sure.
All right. For the sake of the time, then, Commissioner Collins, we're going to designate Vice Mayor to sit down with Captain Payne and our administrative staff to talk with the gentleman, Dave and Kevin, and see what we can come up with. Is that fair? All right. All right, thank you so much. Let's give them a hand. Thank you so much.
All right. If we can have the mayor and commissioners stand in front of the dais for the next volume of special recognitions. Our first certificate of recognition is awarded to Performance NAPA, who is the August 2025 Business of the Month. Is there a representative, representative from Performance NAPA? All right, let's move forward. I'm sorry. You got it? Our next certificate of recognition goes to Gilbert's Jewelers. Who is our 2025 September Business of the Month recipient.
This guy's been around with this one.
I, I wish I would have had a better picture, but there was a sale, so that's... Congratulations, thank you.
That's okay. Now, he's never been short with words. You want to say today, come on.
You say it, and I'll say something about my brother. He's the guy who got me here.
He apologizes for not being here tonight, but to be honest with you, he's a prankster and a people person, but when it comes to stage, he has a phobia, stage fright, and he will not get up here to say anything. But on his behalf, he's proud of his business, and he's proud to be here in the city of Belgrade, and he takes great pride being a community member. So on his behalf, thank you so much. Will certainly be on display tomorrow morning. And then, we brought the other support person, Gil, who loves to be in the limelight.
Hello, guys. I'm shy. I just want to say thank you. As you know, I'm retired. I left the store 11 years ago, and my little brother is the one who handles it, and he's doing great, and I'm so proud of him. I am so proud of him. And glad, let's be glad that he's the one running it, because I'm a cheapskate. I'm a numbers man, you know? And, but he's everything he puts into that store. And the fact that we still live here says a lot. I'm not living in this place. They got to carry me out. This is our town. My brother and I agree, and we love this town. I know, especially the old folks. Eddie, Daddell, my bud here, everything, so. And I don't know that guy over there, the manager, I'm not in good relations with him.
Now, just so y'all know, to the newcomers, this family has been in our community for years. Always treated people with the utmost respect, always. You supported the high schools. I mean, when I was a kid, when I was young, just remember seeing that boy give us jewelry, and every time you walk in that establishment, they treated you with disrespect. They didn't care. They were making money, but same time, they treated you with the respect.
My father, who is Gilbert, he's the guy who started selling door-to-door with a little bag, okay? And the rest is history. This is the reason we love this town. The Lord blessed us, and this is a town that we made it. He always said this. He told us, sons, if you sell to the latins, you make a living. If you sell to the anglos, you make a living. You sell to the blacks, you make a living. But if you can sell all three, and three people for what they are, people, you'll become rich. And that's our policy, everything. Eddie, you know, Daddell, all you guys, and this mayor here, I remember when he got married. But anyway, just to let you know that this is our town, and I love it. I'm religious now, so I got to be careful. Believe it or not, I am. I got conversion, but, you know, I mean, but, you know, you got to change. Thank you.
Yeah, when you walk in that store, you want to leave it quick. We love you, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next certificate of recognition is awarded to Hibbett Sports. Do we have a representative from Hibbett Sports? Is our October, October 2025 Business of the Month. All right. Our November, our certificate of recognition for November is Tropical Wings. Do we have a representative for Tropical Wings? Yes, thank you. Tropical Wings is our November 2025 Business of the Month.
Oh, my God.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Let's save it. Okay, sure.
I just wanted to thank you, thank the city of Belgrade for this honor. Me and my family really are part of this community, and then we try to bring more stuff here. Also, we're going to open new gyms, so when coming up, the community. Yeah, I feel like this is my home and this is my town, so we keep, we promise we keep bringing more stuff and forward this city, okay? And thank you, okay?
And he knows, my grandson knows the meaning of hearts. All right, any comments on the businesses at all?
I just want to say thank you to all of those businesses that was awarded for each particular month. However, as you know, each individual business within our city brings something to our city. You know, Tropical, they give us a discount, you know, law enforcement, they're always there because they get a little discount when they show their badges and stuff. But nevertheless, we thank you for investing in this community, Mr. Gilbert. My heart goes out to that family, our kids at Project Live, they do a lot of things for them. As she said, no kid turned away. We thank you so much for giving our kids an opportunity. And as well as Hibbett and our other NAPA. NAPA does a lot within our city as well, too. So we just want to say thank you to all of you for giving back to our community. Thank you.
I just want to echo Commissioner Collins' comments. They're not just businesses, they're our community partners, and they're involved in our community, so that we don't look at them as outsiders. We, we know they live, breathe, and thank you to Tropical Wings for their commitment to bringing other things here. Just want to say thank you to all the businesses, so our blessings continue to do what y'all do. Thank you.
You may now take your seats. Yes, that's the end of our special presentations, or recognition. So our next, okay, you want to say from? Our next presentation is from Commissioner Collins relating to the holiday contest.
Okay. Just to spice things up around town, bring a little holiday spirit, get everybody warmed up and going. The beautification committee has met, and we have a Christmas decoration contest that will be gearing up very, very soon. We have two categories. One is door decoration, the second one is yard decorations. Each recipient that is interested in participating in this contest, you must have your email address, as well as your email, your physical address, and name, and which category that you are partaking in, no later than December the 10th. Flyers have been printed, we will get them out ASAP. Judging will take place between December the 15th and the 20th. Lights must be on. Lights will be judged between 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM. Oh, we also asked that if you are partaking in the contest, that you keep your decorations and lights up through Christmas, so that the community could get a chance to enjoy, enjoy them. We have a first place, second place, and third place winner in every category. Each winner will be featured on our city's social media site, as well as an opportunity to be a part of one of our local parades. Judging will take place within the city by some of our beautification committee, and those times, again, will be between the hours of 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM, and the lights must be on. There is, we're asking that you have unique themes to be encouraged, displays, family-friendly themes, et cetera. But donations, decorations, I'm sorry, must be visible from the street or front... must be visible from the street or front entry, and you must live within the city of Belgrade in order to be part of the contest. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Moving forward, Mayor and Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve items three through 20?
What's your pleasure?
So move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amazona, is there a second?
Second.
Three to 20, second? All right. Call or Malaport?
Almasan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, under other business, we had a nomination. This is an approval to appoint a city commissioner to serve on the Airport Advisory Committee.
What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
Uh, nominate Commissioner Reese.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amazona to nominate Commissioner Reese on the Airport Advisory Committee. It's been seconded by Commissioner Collins. Any comments? All right, call or roll?
Almasan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, this is a presentation under, it's item 21A. Approval to rescind the award of 309 Southwest Sixth Street Proposal for Purchase by Generational Gem Investment Group LLC. Reconsideration of Proposals and Selection of Proposal after a Public Hearing.
Mayor and Commissioner, as I mentioned briefly, it was a summary about the issue that we had with the CRA property, the 309 Southwest Sixth Street. We're just opening it for a public hearing. It was manager's recommendation to move forward on rescinding it from Generational Gem and awarding Titanium Group and Level 3 Solutions. So we can get a motion to move forward with that.
What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Amazona. Comments from the audience?
No, sir.
Comments from the Commission? All right, call or roll?
Almasan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Moving to ordinances on first reading. Item 22, 2025-18. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, annexing one parcel of real property totaling approximately 0.23 acres, owned by Jam Row Properties Investment LLC, located at 404 First Street, as more particularly described herein. Declaring that the voluntary annexation of the properties meet all legal criteria, directing city administrative staff to take all actions necessary to effectuate the annexation, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
What's your pleasure?
So move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amazona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collins. Audience comment?
No, sir.
Commissioner, comments? All right, call or roll?
Almasan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
And under announcements, there was a typo, but our next workshop is on December 15, 2025, at 6:00 PM, followed by a regular meeting at 6:30 PM here at City Hall Commission Chambers. And that is all my report, sir.
Okay. All right, Mr. Manager, anything for the good order?
Yes, sir, just to let the Commissioners know that the heads park, the butts park, restrooms have been put out the bed.
All right, thank you. PR not here. Counselor, anything for the good order?
Just wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thanks. PBSO, anything for the good order?
Mr. Mayor, no, I don't have anything. However, if we want to, if you want me to repeat what I talked about during the workshop as far as the noise ordinance.
I'm sorry, repeat that, I'm sorry.
I said, no, I don't have anything other than if you want me to repeat what I said during the workshop.
Yeah, it's going for the regular meeting? Yes, please.
So, you know, I agree that we have to address the noise complaints within the city. And, you know, I had an absence for a little while, and there were some proposals that was presented. And I just asked the Commission and the City Manager if you guys would just give me some time to get caught up, and I'll come back with a suggestion at the next City Council meeting. However, I don't want you to think that we won't be addressing the noise complaints within the city while we do this.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
We do have a staff comment.
Sure, thanks.
Mayor and Commissioner, you have a copy. We provided a copy to you guys. But just so that the community knows, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can read about the seven streets that you guys approved an extension for tonight. Would you like me to do all the streets?
Yes, please.
The Mayor and Commission approved the seven streets and extension for it. They started last week and are set to be completed in February, by February 8, 2026. And it's Southwest 12th Street, West Determination, Southwest Avenue B Place, Southwest 12th Street and West Determination, Southwest Avenue C, Southwest 12th Street and West Determination, Southwest Avenue B, between Southwest 8th Street and Southwest 10th Street, Southwest 9th Street, between Southwest Avenue C and MLK Boulevard, Southwest Avenue C Place, between Southwest 4th Street and Southwest 6th Street, Northwest 1st Street, between Northwest Avenue H and Northwest L Avenue. So that's the seven streets. All right, and then we also approved the eight streets. And I can read these two as well. So Southwest Avenue B. I think I have the wrong one. This is a duplicate, Mayor and Commissioner, please, my apologies.
Why she's looking at those, Mr. Manager? If we have not, can we put those, that copy in the lobby used so that when people come in the lobby, they can take a look at the streets of Belgrade?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'm gonna have to come back with the eighth street, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, you can get it when we get the comments in case.
Number 17, but we'll have it out in the lobby for you all.
Yes, in the lobby, thank you.
And then the last comment is to let everyone know about the CRA Town Hall Meeting. It's set for Wednesday, December 10, here at City Hall at 5:30. There's a survey out there. You can have everyone complete the survey. It means a lot. It's a lot of community engagement. We want to hear your thoughts, comments, and everything, so.
Can you explain again to the audience the importance of their participation for this?
Yes, yes. So, do you want me to turn around?
Yes.
I feel like I'm talking, I'm putting my back to you all. So we had a grant that was provided to us by the Transportation Planning Agency. They did a little study on Southwest, on Avenue A, I'm sorry, which is in the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency. And we had, this was last year, we had the community, we had a town hall, and we heard everything and suggestions, comments of what you guys wanted to do. And one of the things that we wanted, that we all agreed, based on the things that they wrote, was to revamp Avenue A, which is our historical downtown. It's the heart of the community. So we had TPA, which is now the MPO, do a little study. They provided that to the city. Those studies cost about $100, $200,000, and they gave it to us at no cost. They gave it to us for free. And it's just basically four blocks. What do you want to see in those blocks? Do you want to see striping? Do you want to see landscape? Do you want to see outdoor dining? What is it that you all want to see? So they're waiting on us to be completed. They gave us a draft. TPA came out here, explained what it is that they were gonna do. They want to hear from the community, what is it that you guys want? And then after that, they can complete it, and we can go and look for funding to be able to do that. So it's really important. We did a little survey. We provided it in English and Spanish. So if we can please have the community be more involved, engaged. If you know someone, please let them know. We're waiting on you guys, and we're gonna talk about the results December 10, here at City Hall. All right?
Thank you, Zay. So the audience would know, just to add on to what she already stated, the management team and my colleagues, we noticed that many of the folks in that business district are putting their monies up. They're trying to beautify. They're putting the monies up to make it happen. So we have a responsibility to try to help out. And this is what our deputy managers indicating to you guys. We have a golden opportunity here to FDOT, to get funding to make Avenue A look like downtown it should be. And so we don't want to do it alone. We want you to help us give ideas. Because it's all, we're all in this together. So we're asking you guys, if you make your time available to come out there and help us with the ideas to promote this opportunity. It's not gonna cost you one penny. We're just asking you to come and give us your thoughts. Thank you, Zay. Okay.
Make a comment on that?
Yes, sure, Vice Mayor.
On the CRA, you know, it's very important for the community to engage. We've done a couple of surveys also on. The state is looking to expand Chucker Shroud or, right? And this is for the community to get your input. Because we don't want y'all to come back saying, well, the city of Belgrade did, the Commissioners decided this. No, we want to hear y'all see whatever. So when something's done there on being done on Avenue A, when it gets to funding and stuff, we want to hear, hey, this is what the community wants. This is not what we want. This is what y'all want. So please engage in those surveys and stuff. Sometimes the other survey was, it was, they send postcards. We put memos and stuff out. This one, it's gonna be a town hall meeting, so come out, let's hear from y'all. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you again, Captain, and welcome back. Do we have fire rescue here? Okay, if not, we move on. Comments from the audience?
No, sir. No comments, sir.
Commissioner, finally come at. Commissioner Collins, you've been recognized for five comments.
Um, yes. So again, I always like to thank everyone for coming out, partaking in these meetings every month. It really means a lot to us. Your input truly does matter. We greatly appreciate it because it gives us insight as to what is it the community wants, right? I also want to say, last week, I got a chance to partake in a luncheon for the Palm Beach County Pay Center for Girls. If you have not ever took part in some way, form, or fashion of this organization, Palm Beach County Pay Center for Girls, please Google it and get involved. When I tell you that was the best ticket purchased this entire year, it was truly, truly heart touching to see the testimonies, the stories that were given from these girls. And some of these girls are girls right here in our community. It's very touching. They had an alumni that came back that was their guest speaker. I believe she's about 23 years old now. She has two master degrees. She is working on her doctor's degree. She's married. She has an autistic child. However, she gives back to the Pay Center. She was brought over to this country by her aunt. And she grew up with no father, no mother, and her aunt lost custody of her. And so she went to, I believe she said, 13 foster homes throughout her lifetime before coming to the Pay Center. And the ladies there and the staff there truly poured into her and showed that she, showed that they cared for her. And now she's doing the same thing in return. Truly amazing organization, and I'm glad that I was able to be a part of that. Please, if you can, get involved, volunteer, do something with that organization. Because I tell you, once you hear those stories and to see what the organization stands for, you truly want to do even the more. That was, that was big for me last week. And I truly appreciate being able to be a part of that. I've already spoken on our holiday contest. Just look for updates and info on our City of Belgrade social media page. Everything will be put out in the days to come. And we hope that this brings some cheer and excitement around town, being that it's the holidays, you know, we love on each other, and bring much great cheer to the city. It was something else that I needed to say, but. And that would, that would be, that would conclude my comments for comments. Thank you again. Happy holidays to each and every one of you, and good night.
If you think of it, we can yield back to you if it come back to you, okay? Vice Mayor, you've been recognized for closing comments.
Yeah, first, I want to thank all our residents for coming out and participating with us. I also want to thank all our businesses that are here. You know, small businesses, the heart of our community. They do help the city with their tax bases and other things, giving back to the community. So I urge all our residents, you know, to shop here local and help them out. You know, they're our neighbors, they're our friends. So, you know, when you shop here, you're helping one of your own. It's not going to no corporate office or anything. So I want to thank all our small businesses, no matter how big or how small you are, to continue that. I want to thank our city staff, wish them a happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving that's coming up next week. PBSO, Fire Rescue. But one, a big shout out to the Glaze Day Gators football team. They made it to the state semifinals. They came up short, 24-21, but I mean, they played their harsh out. And congratulations to them. They're champions in our hearts, in our community. So I want to recognize them, the football team for Glaze Day Gators. And with that, I'll close, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I repeat the same thing. Thank you, Mr. Manager and staff, and all you guys, what you do. A couple of announcement. We did have a good Oktoberfest. We call it Oktoberfest, but it's Halloween night. We don't support, nor do we give any thanks to ghosts and gobblers. But we understand kids like to go out and have a good time. We had a good time. I think we served no less than 3,000 kids on that Halloween night. Was in competition with Mugg Bowl, but the kids had a great time. I want to thank our management team and staff, Johnny and all the Parks and Rec, Mr. Johnson, all, London and Jessica, everybody who played a role with the City of Belgrade. Those kids and parents had a great time. We also have December coming up, and we're probably gonna have our toy giveaway before we meet again. And that's gonna be on December 19. December 14, we kick off Carolin in the Park, right out in front of the City of Belgrade. Where we make sure we light the tree on December 14. And then on the 19, we're gonna be giving away the toys to needed families. Again, opportunity to network with our community. Just to follow up, Red Speed, the assignment is, Mr. Manager, his management team, Captain Payne and our Vice Mayor, to come up with a game plan so we can review it if need be. And then the noise ordinance, the time is ticking. We know in good hands, Captain Payne, you'll take care of that. You and Mr. Daddell's with the management team to have a product for us on next meeting to go ahead and take action. And the last thing, again, turkey giveaway will be on December, I mean, November 24 at New Birth Church, which is in the curve of the main street there. So next to the bowling alley. December, November 24, like he said, December. But it will be starting at 10 o'clock. Anybody that you know that may need a turkey gift card, November 24 at 10, we will start that process. And again, it's thanks to many of our business community segment, as well as our staff. Thank you all so much for being patient with us tonight, and we look forward to seeing you next meeting. God bless you. This means a journey.